Thank you. Would like to call to order the April 18th, 2017 meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. Welcome. It's good to have all of you with us tonight. Trust that everyone had a nice Easter holiday. And we are very happy to have with us tonight Girl Scout Brownie Troop 2225 from Bethel United Methodist Church for the presentation of colors. Please stand.
Color Guards advance. Prepare to post the colors. Post colors. Salute. Please join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color Guards return to post.
Thank you very much. And after our invocation, we'll ask all of you to come up front to the microphone and introduce yourself. And Commissioner Honeycutt will have a pen for you. We're very pleased to have with us Pastor Saul Sebus from Charity Baptist Church for our invocation tonight.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the life and health to be here today. Thank you for all the great freedoms you've given us here in this country, Lord, along with the religious freedom you gave us even where we could recognize Easter this past weekend. We're also thankful, Lord, for the governmental freedoms that we're able to experience in the democracy we have here in the U.S. We pray for those in top leadership now in D.C., Lord, as we go through turbulent times, that you would grant them wisdom. We pray for your protection for all the brave men and women who serve us abroad in the armed forces, as well as those who serve us here locally through our police, fire, and first responder professions. God, we're thankful for all of the individuals present here today on the commission who serve us locally here in Cabarrus County and that they choose to use the personality and gifts that you gave to them to serve the people that you love. We pray now for wisdom for them and for a productive meeting as decisions are made to positively affect our community. We ask all these things in the name of Christ Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us tonight. And now, as our brownies are coming forward to the microphone, I'd like to also welcome our youth commissioner, Cassin Nowbone. I hope I pronounced that somewhat correct. Great. We're glad to have you with us tonight. And now, if our brownies would come to the microphone and introduce themselves and tell us what you enjoy about being a Brownie. I think the microphones pull down for you there.
Hi, my name is Sarah, and I enjoy being a Brownie because we go on lots of adventures and stuff.
Great. Thank you. And please try to speak loudly so they can hear you on television as well as in the audience.
My name is Skylar Hicks, and I enjoy being a Brownie by serving people and helping them.
Great. Thank you.
My name is Ariana Santi-Jean. I like being a Brownie because I get to help people and we get to sell things for them and we get to help and give stuff to the community and we sell things for them that are cookies.
Thank you.
My name is Belon Igomichi, and I love being a Girl Scout because I help other people.
Great. Thank you.
My name is Faith, and I like being a Brownie because of all the fun activities we do.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate you being with us tonight, especially while you're probably on your spring break. So, we're glad you're here. Okay. First item on our agenda is the approval or corrections of the minutes, which are in your agenda packages. Do I hear any corrections or a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, prior to making a motion to approve at the risk of embarrassing our clerk, I would like to say that, and thank her for doing such a good job of putting these together. As I go through them, you know, they're not supposed to be a blow-by-blow of every single thing that's said, but it's supposed to be a general idea of what is said at the meeting. And she does a fantastic job of putting those together, and I just wanted to publicly say thank you. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented, hoping that there's not a correction coming from somebody else on the floor.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Do I hear a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I certainly agree with you. And I'm quite frequently surprised at the detail that's included in those minutes. Next item is approval of our agenda, which you all have in front of you. And so, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes to the agenda on page 167. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to recognitions and presentations. And up first is the Holler Parade presentation, and we're happy to have Jacqueline Gaffara with us tonight.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. We'll pull up a presentation for everyone to view as I go along. Well, we will kick off the 600 Festival festivities on May the 5th in downtown Kannapolis as part of Jiggy with the Piggy. We will have the Fourth Annual Movies on the Campus Event, which this year will be held within the gazebo area of Veterans Park. And the movie this year will be Monster Trucks. I actually saw it myself at the Jim Theater back in January. And it's a great movie, and this actually will be the first year that the movie we've selected is a new movie that's been out. In the past, we've shown cars and various other motorsports-related movies, but this will be the first new movie. So, I anticipate a much larger crowd on May the 5th for that movie. A new item that we're doing this year is the Zucchini 600. You may remember back several years ago, the Zucchini 500 used to take place in downtown Kannapolis. I believe Hillbush Ford was a part of that in the city of Kannapolis. So, we're bringing that back. So, the Zucchini 600, which we changed it to the 600 because we commemorate the month of May with a Coca-Cola 600. Kids will be able to race their zucchinis. So, yes, the vegetable. So, on May the 4th, actually, at the farmer's market in Kannapolis, we'll have a build session where kids can come and build their zucchini. They can build it at home. We've sent some materials home with the schools. And they can also join us on May the 6th and build them during Jiggy with the Piggy. We'll have a pit area set up, and they can build them and race them. And thanks to the Cabarrus County CBB, we will also have medals to provide to the winners. So, I think it'll have an announcer, so it'll be a fun, fun little race for the kids to participate. It's very similar to a Pinewood Derby race. So, I hope you can join us that day in downtown Kannapolis. Then we move to downtown Concord on May the 18th for the Third Annual Hallers on Union Parade and Fan Fest. Last year was the first year we had the Fan Fest in downtown Concord with show cars and activities and games and simulators. So, we're spicing that up a little more this year with some bounce houses and more games for kids, as well as additional displays from Coca-Cola and Freightliner, as well as additional simulators and additional race cars on display. The adder for this event, we are working with a team to secure a NASCAR driver to be our grand marshal, as well as to have a Q&amp;A from the stage. So, more details to come on that. And we also have Winston Kelly, who will announce each of the trucks, as well as to participate in the Q&amp;A as well. The route for the parade is the same as it has been in the past, where they will stage at Radinal Powersports on Highway 29 and take a route through downtown Concord along Union Street to 49, more head road to 29, and enter the racetrack at the Z-Max Dragway on Speedway Boulevard. And the best news, I think, is the concert that night as chairman of the board. They were just recently inducted to the Hall of Fame, and I believe this will be the first time they've been in Concord with their name as chairman of the board. So, we're really looking forward to having them perform. The stage will be on Means Avenue, and they will start their performance at 7:00 p.m. So, the Fan Fest in downtown Concord is from 5:00 to 9:00, so I hope everyone will join us. Have any questions?
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us.
Thank you for having me.
It is definitely a fun event. The Holler's Parade was, I enjoyed very much last year, and I have, several years ago, had the pleasure of judging the Zucchini 500. So, I am excited to see the Zucchini 600. It really is cool. They do some really, really neat things.
It is fun.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. Okay. Next, we have from Active Living in Parks, Older Americans Month 2017 proclamation. And I will read that to you now. Proclamation, Older Americans Month 2017, Age Out Loud. Whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council recognizes that older adults are aging out loud, advocating for themselves, their peers, and their communities, paving the way for future generations. And whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council is committed to raising awareness about issues facing older Americans and helping all individuals to thrive in communities of their choice for as long as possible. And whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council will continue to provide hours of volunteer, community, and civic service. And whereas we appreciate the value of inclusion and support in helping older adults successfully contribute to and benefit from their communities. And whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social involvement, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, ensuring community members can benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2017 as Older Americans Month. And do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I will say Commissioner Shue and I were honored to be present at the opening ceremonies for the senior games a week or so ago, and that is a lively, energetic bunch. There's no question about it. So, they do a lot, lot of good things in our community. Next, we have from Communications and Outreach, Excellent Communication Awards, and we're happy to have Jonathan Marshall talk about that. Skip over Soil and Water. Sorry about that. Vicki, did you want to speak on that?
Appreciate that. Good evening, Chairman and fellow board members. I am Vicki Porter, Chairman of the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District Board. We provide conservation assistance to people of Cabarrus County. I am one of three members of our five-member board, along with Tommy Porter and Vice Chairman Jeff Goforth, who are elected officials, just like members of your board. Ned Hudson and Louis Sutha are appointed members, and we currently have Zach Moffett and Bob Ritchie as associate members. Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District exists to encourage the informed and responsible stewardship of the land and all of its natural resources. This goal echoes the core values that you've established for our community pertaining to the environment, namely, and this is a quote from your board, "We're concerned about our natural, historic, economic, and aesthetic resources and endeavor to enhance their sustainability for future generations." Our current strategic conservation plan for the county includes the following seven priorities: legislation, funding, outreach, education, schools, conservation programs, land use, and events. The Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District encourages you to think about your personal responsibility to be a good steward of natural resources during its annual stewardship week celebration. The National Association of Conservation Districts has proclaimed April 30th through May 7th, 2017, as stewardship week. The 2017 stewardship week is themed Healthy Soils Are Full of Life, encouraging citizens, schools, and communities to develop and maintain habitat areas using good conservation practices. Let me briefly mention a current activity that directly benefits our county. On the Saturday prior to the beginning of the 2017 stewardship week observation, two teams from Cannon School and over 60 high school teams from across the state will compete at the annual North Carolina Enviroathon competition. This event tests students' knowledge in aquatics, current environmental issues, forestry soils, and wildlife. Being good stewards of our natural resources at home and in our communities is an important task for each citizen. When we think about protecting and managing our natural resources, we can provide healthy habits, habitats for the ecosystems on our planet. Each of us can make a difference by developing habitat areas in our own backyards, our schools, or in our communities. We look forward, as always, to work in partnership with your board in the weeks and months ahead.
Great. Thank you very much. And I apologize for getting off track on the agenda.
That's not a problem.
But we do have a proclamation here in front of me, and I will read that right now. Soil and Water Stewardship Week 2017 proclamation. Whereas fertile soil and clean water provide us with our daily sustenance, and whereas effective conservation practices have helped provide us a rich standard of living, and whereas our security depends upon healthy soil and clean water, and whereas stewardship calls for each person to help conserve these precious resources. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim April 30th to May 7th, 2017, Soil and Water Stewardship Week. And I would entertain a motion at this time that we adopt this proclamation. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we sincerely appreciate what you and the rest of the Soil and Water Conservation Board do for our county all the time, and you did a wonderful job of outlining those priorities, and we very much appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you again for your all's support. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, now that we had a false start, Jonathan Marshall will talk with us about Communications and Outreach.
It is my pleasure to present to you some awards, along with our Communications and Outreach Department and the awards they won. But just as an introduction, again, you all know this. You see this every one of our meetings. You see this in the programs they do. But the role of our communications is to promote awareness of our services, participation in those services and programs, and ultimately transparency in government. Those things are primary goals, and they, this department acts as a support for all of our other departments that provide those services and programs. It's interesting that the people who are watching this live and those who are watching it on tape are some of the primary beneficiaries of that. Very few boards of commissioners that broadcast their meetings like this. Not just your meetings, but your work sessions, your special events, and it's through our Communications and Outreach we're able to do that. And these awards, well, they are important, and it's important to recognize that's not the goal. The goal is really to have that transparency, that awareness, and that participation. They do serve as benchmarks and measures to see how well they're doing this. Last, or a couple of weeks ago, the North County City and County Communicators Meeting was held, NC-3C in Charlotte, and our Communications and Outreach Department won four awards. So, I'm going to ask them to come forward, Kasha Thompson, David Baxter, and Jarrett Glass. And David and Jarrett, although they see David a lot, they don't get to see Jarrett too much because usually, particularly at this time of the meeting, he's back in a room in another part of the building, usually behind the camera. Kristen Bunton is the other staff person who is not with us this evening. So, the first award was for second place in the category of, and this is a wonderful title, most creative activity for the least dollars spent. We should win a lot of awards for that. I would hope we could. But it was for the early voting selfie. So, it was a station setup so people going to do early voting could take a selfie, and then they became our promotion. So, it was great. You put something out there and have people who are coming to vote perform the promotion for you to encourage others to come early vote. They're going to start moving the hardware as I say this. The second, another second-place award was in the category of TV and videos, and that was for our weekly program, Cabarrus This Week, but particularly for the episode that was done at Southern Grace Distillery. This is my pun, not the judges', so you can blame me, and I'm also doing this for Kasha's benefit since we all know she enjoys a pun. But it was praised by the judges as proof that staff know their audience. Of course, we use Cabarrus This Week. It is a weekly way to promote all the different events, activities, programs, and our services. And we oftentimes, David and Kasha do a great job of going out to local businesses or new businesses as a way to let people know that that business is, in this case, moved to a new location, but in other cases is just recently opened. A first-place award in the magazine category was for Journeys Magazine. We've had two issues of that magazine come out so far, and it's a project that's an outgrowth of the Aging Strategic Plan that this board adopted. It's really recognition of the growth in the senior demographic, and it's a way that we're showing how it is vitally important that we promote and advertise services and programs for that demographic, for that aging population. And then finally, and certainly not least, David Baxter was awarded the Chris Colson Award as the Communicator of the Year in North Carolina. I'm going to say that again, the Communicator of the Year in North Carolina. I'm glad he's holding that thing. That is a heavy award and slightly dangerous. David is a founding member of NC-3C, and he was recognized for his pioneering work in local government programming, both locally and statewide. Just some examples, Cabarrus This Week, which we just talked about, which functions to promote and advertise our programs. Commissioners Meetings, which is the essence of that transparency that we're striving for. Historical Moments, which is an educational program that I think has been invaluable to people throughout this county. I know I tell people who come to work here new that if they want to learn something about the county, a great way is just go on YouTube and start watching those and let Clarence teach them about the county. Simply Local, Pam's Kitchen, Successful Gardener, and the New Out and About are just other examples of the type of programming. What David has done throughout the years is try and change what local government programming is on local government stations. And because he's been so successful as that, he's been a speaker, panelist, and advisor to other communicators who want to do similar things in their jurisdictions. By doing that, David has helped spread these innovations to a much larger audience, allowing local governments to improve how they accomplish their mission, which is the same as ours, that transparency, that education, and that promotion of the type of services that we provide. So, at this point, I'd like to ask the Communicator of the Year to make a few comments.
Well, first of all, this is not an individual award. This could never have been accomplished without the great and talented people that I've worked with over the past 13 years here, and especially the team that we're working together with now. This team has done some amazing things, taken us really into the next generation of communication. It's, the future is really bright. But the other thing I want to do is I want to thank you guys because, because your priority is communication with the residents of this lovely county. That is what is important, and it makes our job so easy to do because of your support, management support. It's been, you know, I wake up every morning and I think how blessed I am to be in a situation like this. And for that, I want to thank you. We all want to thank you for all your support. And I tell you, it was kind of funny, just walking across the street today, there was a young man in his 30s, and he had his son. He was carrying his, like, two or three years old. And he walks up and he goes, "Hey, we watch you on TV." And I said, "Well, that's very nice. Really appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's kind of you to say." I said, you know, and I said, "We just try to get the information out, you know? Is that helpful for you?" He goes, "Oh, absolutely." He says, "Especially for my little boy." You know, he says, "Everything, we do all these different things because we hear all the programs and services out there, and we definitely take advantage of it. And so, you just, you know, keep it up." So, those are the types of things that you can't put price on, and that are just, I mean, that's why you get up in the morning, you know? And that's what we're all, with all the departments that do all the programs and services, we're just the communicators. You know, we're the people that tell, you know, all the people, EMF, Sheriff's Department, Cooperative Extension, all the different social services, all of that, those wonderful programs. And what we are trying to do the best we can, and you're giving us all kinds of great support, is to let everybody know what's available so their quality of life can be the best it can be. Thank you.
First of all, congratulations. Secondly, we have a request for you all to give a closing.
Really?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Four awards in certainly of the entire state.
Thank you.
We very much appreciate what you guys do all the time, and certainly you should hear your comments about transparency, and that is something that we strive for and we feel is important, and we want the citizens of Cabarrus County to have input, to know what we're doing, and have an opportunity to communicate back with us. When I first came on this board, I really thought nobody watched these submissions. Now, Cabarrus This Week, perhaps, I am constantly amazed at the number of people that I encounter that say, "Oh, yes, we saw that. We saw that at the meeting on television," and I think people truly do appreciate it. And we're so proud of the way that all of you handle things on our behalf, and just a very sincere congratulations. And I would look forward to anybody else looking at your comments better than us. We really appreciate it. You may just probably, I'll.
Well, I wanted to add one quick other little thing. Jarrett and I, of course, because I'm never speechless, right? Jarrett and I were doing, conducting one of the seminars at the organizational meeting at the conference, and one of the biggest interests that we got when we were talking about production and stuff was out and about. A lot of people were just totally intrigued by the idea of what you guys are going out and meeting people and talking to people and the way that's set, it's out around with all the folks out in the community. So, I got a feeling there were probably these five or six different counties that were very interested in trying to duplicate that. So, that shows what a great idea that you guys had.
Great. Well, thank you, and we appreciate the way you execute it, and that's a lot of fun for us, too. You know, we get to go out to a lot of neat places and give people an opportunity to talk, and we enjoy it very much. So, I think another round of applause is in order. We move now to the informal public comment section of our meeting, and we are happy to have with us tonight McKay Burke, who is going to talk with us about a project that he is promoting.
Hey, everyone. As you just said, my name is McKay Burke. I'm a sophomore at Mount Pleasant High School, and I'm a part of the, I'm ambassador of the Academy of Energy and Sustainability. And this is an academy that it's, shows. And this is an academy that it's, shows kids different motions of how to go about engineering processes, as well as different ways to use renewable resources in a better way. And a project that we stumbled across is called Precious Plastics. And this is a project of which started almost in indigent countries, and it's, you have four machines, and one of these machines crushes up plastic, and the other three, they all melt plastic in two different ways. And we wanted to, as the academy, we wanted to make those machines, but we wanted, we had no way really to pay for what we needed. And so I started, as I handed out to all of you, I started a 5K race, and it's going to be at Mount Pleasant High School on May 20th. It's going to be at 8:00 AM to 11:00. And this race, all the funds are going to go towards making that, and basically, if we can get all the machines done, and we can get them all made and solidified, we'll do it all over the summer, and that's the goal. We will come back, and then we'll have a whole recycling project for the whole community, as well as our school, and we can pretty much make anything we'd like out of any of this plastic, because it can be melted down and created into anything you'd like. And that's, our overall goal is to just get people out here for the Bottle Smash Recycle Dash, and just get people out there at our school, and if anyone's wanting to send in any money for their donations or to come run the race, you can either send them to the school and just have, send it with the flyer, or just send it with your name saying you'd like to run and the money in it, or you can do it through check, and you can just send the check to Mount Pleasant High School. And anybody who you know of that likes to run, or anybody who just likes to help out the community, please feel free to tell them about my poster, tell them to email me anything you'd like. That's pretty much all I've got for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your coming and wish you success, especially like the name, Bottle Smash Recycle Dash.
Yes, sir.
That's pretty cool.
Thank you.
Sir, yes.
How much are your machines that you're trying to get?
Well, they're made of different parts that you can find almost anywhere, it's just there's certain stuff like motors and just, you know, just little things that cost more. And there's little things throughout this project, it's actually going to go into make other bigger projects for our academy, like we're wanting to make a koi pond, and we want to make huge wall gardens along the walls, and are going to take the water from the koi pond using solar panels, and we're going to make it self hydro, like hydroponics. And this precious plastics would kind of be the start of it. And so any pots for plants you might want to sell, you can make the pots, any like recognition or awards for our school, you can make the plaques for all of them using the plastics. And you can do so much with it, and it's something we'd really like to accomplish and do, and we just, we need the money for now, and hopefully get people out here, get them to run and make our machines.
Thank you.
So do you, have you set a goal for what, what you hope you'll raise on this run?
Well, since it's, it's only, it's $10 for an adult, $5 for a kid, and that's, that's pretty cheap for a 5K. And so if you were just to have five people, I mean, 50 people, sorry, you'd have $500. So the goal is to just get as much as possible, but say I got 100 people, it'd be $1,000, right, to the project that we'd like to have for, for our school, so say $1,000 would be our goal.
Excellent. Well, I feel sure there are probably some people listening that, that might be interested in contributing, but not interested in running as well, so.
Anyone who would like to see it, I have a Facebook page for the page, just look up Bottle Smash Recycle Dash on Facebook, you'll see, it's a new page, but it's, it's there. If I have more information or another one of these flyers, if anyone would like to see it, watching, or any of you guys, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you being here. I'll add one thing, since we just talked about Communications Department and what they do. The Cabarrus County 4H sponsors a program for high school students in the area. Mount Pleasant High School most recently came here to the Governmental Center and had various activities involving budget and looking at the different departments, and one of the things that they did was to come here in this room, and myself and a school board member, someone from the Sheriff's Department, were here to talk with them and answer questions that they might have. And so one of McKay's questions, and he had several, but one was, "Do you have any suggestions as to how I can promote this project that I'm working on?" And so I suggested to him that he come take advantage of our excellent communication opportunities to come and speak to this group and be on television, and so we hope that, that that works out for you. I'm very impressed that you came.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Nice talking to you all. Thank you.
Okay, that was the only card that I had for public comment for tonight. If there's anybody else here that would like to speak, I would invite you to do so now. Seeing no one, we will move on to old business. At our meeting last month, we had a public hearing for a contract renewal for, to, and for the franchise ordinance of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners granting a franchise to operate non-emergency ambulance service to American TransMed. And I think we have need of a second public hearing, and so at this time, I would open the public hearing, and hear from anybody that would like to speak on the franchise agreement with American TransMed. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the franchise ordinance of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners granting a franchise to operate non-emergency ambulance service to American TransMed. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we now move to our consent agenda, and of course, these are all items that we have discussed at length at our work session earlier this month. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Now we move to new business, and we have the modification of the Concord-Kinapolis County, Concord-Cabarrus County Interlocal Agreement for the Central Area Plan, and Jonathan's going to talk with us.
Of course, you, you've seen this particular agreement come up a few times here lately, but when we adopted the Central Area Plan jointly with the City of Concord, both boards also adopted an agreement on the extension of public utilities. In Area B within that plan, or Area A within that plan, it limits the extension of public water and sewer. And we do have cases, and the agreement outlines that, if there's an emergency, say someone's on a well and there's an emergency and they need to connect to public water and it's available, then those, those are approved. We also have some cases where the City of Concord has some water utilities that are available on some vacant lots, and the way the agreement is written, those cannot be automatically approved. So this is a case where we would propose a modification of the agreement to allow the connection in just that case, where someone has a vacant lot, they wish to build on it, and they'd like to connect to the public water. It's not an extension of the line, it's really just allowing Concord to take advantage of some investment they've already made in that area.
Okay, any questions for Jonathan? All right, thank you very much. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the ad hoc modification of the Concord City-Kinap, Cabarrus County Interlocal Agreement Regarding the Central Area Plan.
I move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we move to appointments, and we have one tonight for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. An application to serve on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council has been received from Kinapolis City School student Jessica Herrera to fill the Kinapolis City School Student Under 18 position. At its March 15th meeting, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council voted to recommend her to be appointed to fill the vacant position. A letter from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Chair is in, in this regard, is attached to this. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Jessica Herrera to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council as the Kinapolis City School Student Under 18 Representative for a two-year term, ending June 30th, 2018.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And you will see attached to your agenda a number of reports for informational purposes. Included amongst those is a request for applications for county boards and committees. And of course, we talk about this at each meeting, but we invite people to, to participate in a number of the, the boards and committees. Just to give a little overview, our Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee currently has six vacant positions. The Board of Equalization and Review has two terms that will be expiring soon. Cabarrus County Planning and Zoning Commission has two vacant positions, one from Harrisburg and one from Kinapolis. The Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Board has one term expiring soon. Centralina Workforce Development Board has two terms expiring soon. Concord Planning and Zoning Commission Extraterritorial Jurisdiction has one vacant position. Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board has two terms expiring soon. Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee has one vacant position. DHS Designee Disabled Adults Jury Commission has one term expiring soon. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council has five terms expiring soon. I didn't realize the list was quite this long. Library Board of Trustees has three terms expiring soon. Mount Pleasant Planning Board and Board of Adjustment has one vacant position as an alternate. Nursing, Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee has seven vacant positions. Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County has two terms expiring soon. Region F Aging Advisory Committee has two terms expiring soon. Rowan Cabarrus Community College Board of Trustees has two terms expiring soon. Tourism Authority of Cabarrus County has four terms expiring soon. Transportation Advisory Board has three terms expiring soon and two vacant positions. The, and the list goes on. So there are plenty of opportunities to serve. We encourage you to, to express your interest, to contact our clerk, and let her know if you might be interested in serving on any of those committees. At this time, I will receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report? Okay, hearing none. We do not have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment before we get going there.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know how you was going to handle that.
Yeah.
But I wanted to make a comment, sort of draw attention to the report that we had for the Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation. Normally, we have anywhere from 30, 35 current inquiries of people looking or wanting to come to Cabarrus County businesses, that type thing, and I couldn't help notice, and I'm sure you did too, that we had 47 currently pending right now, and 15 of those came in the month of March, which, you know, brings us up to 47 now that's pending, coming into Cabarrus County, bringing manufacturing, distribution, and things like that, which is equals to jobs. And so with all these houses and apartments going up, you know, obviously, there's going to be people coming, and so there's going to have to be jobs, too. And so it looks like that we're definitely in a very aggressive mode right now as far as building and growth, and with what to see economic development people do, it's helping us. And so I just wanted to bring light of that. And by the way, 22 of those 47 is manufacturing jobs.
Right.
Manufacturing facilities that'll be coming here, hopefully they'll be coming here if the cards play out right. So I wanted to just bring that to all of these attentions, so we've got some bright days ahead of us, I believe.
Well, I appreciate you pointing that out, and we certainly do, and we are extremely fortunate with the number of inquiries that we have. The thing that I point out to folks a lot of times is how important the image and that we project in Cabarrus County is to our economic development opportunities. In today's age of electronic communication and the internet, we never know how many people check us out before we ever hear from them. So, so those, those initial, and that's where our communications folks do a wonderful job of presenting that information to all the world that comes to look at Cabarrus County. And it's only after they look at those things, if they like what they see, that we actually hear from them, so we are, we are very fortunate. Any other comments before we adjourn? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.